I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:01. And as a reminder, if you'd like to speak before the commission, please fill out a blue speaker form in the back there and hand it to our clerk, Ms. Cooper here, Mrs. Cooper. Sorry. Thank you for getting that. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston.
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea.
Aye.
Chair Feng.
Here. And tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by Vice Chair Oblea.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Moving on to number three on the agenda, public comments. As a reminder, you may address the commission by filling out the speaker card. However, we are not able to comment or respond to anything that's not on the agenda tonight. And every person has about three minutes, or not about three minutes, and someone will remind you that your three minutes is up. And clerk, is there anybody that would like to speak tonight?
Yes, our first speaker is Michelle Reyes.
Hello. Michelle Reyes, thank you for your time. Can you use the wireless mic that's there? Can you hear me? She, um, she's speaking.
Is it something on today's agenda?
Well, she's able to speak on anything in general. I believe so. Would it be on the agenda, or is it just, are we good?
No, we spoke to Ms. Reyes before the meeting. She's here to talk about the Merge project, the entire thing, which is tentatively scheduled for your November meeting. But since she's here, I think this is the appropriate time for her to address the commission and express her concerns.
Okay, cool. Just wanted to clear that up, sorry about that.
No worries.
Now, go ahead.
So, I've also provided an email with our concerns. I'm actually a resident of Ontario, and our house is backed up to the wash, which is right behind the Merge. Our main concern is noise, light, and pollution that will be caused by the project. We're just asking, or I am just asking, that a sound wall be built, dancer landscaping be installed, and no idling of the trucks. It's currently a very quiet area behind our home, there's a cornfield there, and we're concerned with bright lights and eighteen-wheelers going in and out of there. We saw the concept plan, and apparently there's going to be a road between the industrial buildings and the wash, which is the north, and north side of the property, which is what backs up to our homes. So we're just asking that you please take that into consideration when building this.
Thank you.
No problem, you're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Just a reminder, there's, as Mr. Norris mentioned, there is this project coming before us at a later date in November, so keep an eye on that. So we'll have another opportunity to speak on that directly on the agenda as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I think we have one other speaker to talk on that project while he's coming up. Just a reminder that we do, we did prepare a detailed environmental impact report on the project. It's available on our website. We're accepting public comments through November 2nd, so you still have several weeks to look at that and comment on it. But it goes into all those issues of noise, light, pollution, et cetera, so that's examined in detail. I'll also mention that the project planner, Kanika Kith, is here behind me, and also in the audience, in the very attractive lavender shirt there is Ray Pulverini. He's our applicant, so if you want to speak directly to him about the project, he's right there, so.
Our next speaker is Eduardo Salazar.
Hello, Commission. My name is Eduardo Salazar, although feel free to refer me, to me as Eddie, should I come back for the next meeting. It usually is a little bit easier to pronounce. I'm a neighbor of our first speaker. I actually live three houses down from her, and so my house is pretty much in the exact same situation. My back fence, which is not a block fence, it's just kind of metal rods, looks clearly at the current cornfield, so whatever is coming next, we will have a front row view at it. This is the first time I received a public notice for this project, or frankly speaking, any project, so this is all very new to me. But I didn't want to miss my chance to comment on it, as I'm not quite up to speed into how a project is broken down into different phases, like today's meeting, and then later in November's meeting, so hi, for the first time.
Hi.
I want to ask to keep in mind all the very same things that our first speaker already brought up. Noise would be the big one for me, but just looking at the tentative plan, I do see that at least some of the truck bays face north, so with that, I'm sure it's going to come some very intense light pollution from time to time, should the trucks be turning around and pointing toward us as they then pull away on that north frontage road that's going to be right by our, our fence. Pollution's also an issue, and of course, noise. I did get a chance to very briefly peruse the environmental impact statement, or at least the website, that contained several of the answers to the initial plan proposal, including a sound study. And just by skimming it, I see our, there's already in place a recommendation for a ten-foot-high solid block wall on the eastern edge of the project, since there's already a new residential community being built right next to the new project. And whatever the thresholds used in that recommendation and that subsequent, then that study and the subsequent recommendation, I guess I would ask that just a little bit extra consideration be given to us to maybe adjust those thresholds downward, because we don't want to hear any of that stuff either. We really don't, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more speakers?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number four on the agenda. As regards to any addition and revisions to the agenda, is there?
Staff has none, sir.
Okay. Anybody on commission? No? Okay. And is there a motion to, oh, oh, sorry. I have a lack of sleep today, so you'll have to excuse me. I'm like, ugh. Okay, I'm sorry, number five, consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are approved with one motion unless commissioners, staff member, or members of the public request a change. Any changes to consent calendar by staff?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioners? Is there a motion to approve consent calendar?
Correct motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Charleston.
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea.
Aye.
Chair Feng.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Moving pretty quickly tonight, I'm moving on to public hearings, agenda item six. This time, we'll conduct three public hearings. If you'd like to speak for the commission tonight, again, the blue speaker cards are in the back, and please hand them to Mrs. Cooper, our city clerk. And let's see, who's there? Six point one. Okay. Okay, project number PLN 18-20042 for a new multi-tenant retail building at the Goodman Commerce Center. Is there a presentation?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. We do have a presentation. There's also on your dais tonight some additional information that was published since the agenda went out last week, so you have that, and we'll go through that in the PowerPoint show. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kanika, who is the project planner, and she has a detailed PowerPoint show for you.
Good evening, Commissioner. The project before you this evening is a project that was continued from the last meeting in September, is a major development review to build a 6,000-square-foot multi-building at the Goodman Commerce Center. At that September meeting, the commission had three design suggestions for the applicant. One is to eliminate the dead-end parking area so that cars wouldn't have to back out if the parking lot was full. Two is to improve the Hamner-facing elevation, and three is to provide direct vehicle connection to the parcel north of CR 11. As Mr. Norris mentioned before you, in, in front of you on the dais, is a revised site plan for the project that has superseded the site plan in your staff report. Staff feels that, with the exception of the last design suggestion, this new site plan addressed the commission's recommendation. This is a staff, this is a site plan that was provided in your staff report. Since the release of the staff report, that site plan had been superseded with the new site plan in front of you. Here, on this screen, the site plan to the left is the September version that was presented, and as you can see, there's a dead-end parking stall, parking area, that the commission recommend to be revised. The site plan to your right is the one that's in your staff report. That is an improvement to the September version, but it didn't fully address the commission's And now, the site plan to the right is the new site plan that's before you this evening that staff is requesting the planning commission to consider. This site plan is designed so that the building back onto Hamner Avenue and all the parking spaces are in front of the building, so they can be easily accessible with a two-way, with two access points. There's some differences in this site plan compared to what was presented to the commission in September, and I'll talk about that as we move forward a little bit. At the last meeting, the commission asked for more glass on the elevation facing Hamner. Because this building is redesigned so that the back faces Hamner, the applicant added more glass on the rear elevation, which is the two elevation on the right-hand side. And outlined there in red in the bottom is the back of the building that will be facing Hamner, and the applicant added more glass and projecting canopy to provide more articulation. And as you can see, the elevation, the previous elevation are provided on the left. Here's another comparison of what was presented in September versus what's presented tonight. Again, the area outlined in red are the area that the applicant proposing more glass to create a more storefront appearance. And that's the back, and that's the bottom elevation on your right shows both the back and the elevation that will be facing the driveway of Hamner, and that will be visible from that corner, so the applicant added glass around there. So as I mentioned earlier, the site plan before you was different from the September meeting in that it changes its orientation, and as discussed in the staff report, similar to what was presented there, is that to accommodate this new design, to provide better circulation, removing the dead-end parking, and still providing pedestrian connectivity to the retail area to the north and south, and also to Hamner, the applicant was not able to meet our parking standard. Based on the size of the building, the parking, the applicant is required to provide thirty-two parking spaces, but with this revised design, we're only able to provide thirty, so that's two less parking spaces than was required. Staff is supportive of this parking reduction and requesting the commission to consider and approve the parking reduction because it provides a nicer building orientation, easier access, and still has the pedestrian connectivity. And also, there's a round circle feature in the middle island there. That is going to be a raised planter seat area that is common area for anybody to go and sit at, and since we haven't got a new rendering showing what will be out there, the applicant is here this evening to provide more detail on that as well. With that, staff recommend that the planning commission approve the site plan and the elevation that's before you this evening on the dais. This concludes staff presentation.
Thank you, Kanika. I'll open public hearing now, and the applicant like to add to the presentation? Oh, sorry, I'm looking over that ward, I'm like, I'm telling you, I'm losing, sorry ward, I'm just, ugh.
Just on. Yeah. Oh. Good evening, Chairperson Feng and fellow commissioners. Have to say, I love your chambers. It's the first time I've been here before you and in the new facility, and it's fantastic. We don't have the ice maker making noise every ten minutes, so it's wonderful, so congratulations. So I made the mistake of going on vacation, and came back and discovered that the, the project had been continued, and after catching my breath and thinking about it, I really wanted to thank each and every one of you for your thoughtful comments. You know, nobody likes to step back and redo things, but I think the, the feedback that you gave us, including you, Mr. Lee, was, was really helpful, and I think it was all positive and accretive to the project, so, so thank you for that. And Kanika mentioned that there's a area which is really meant to be a pedestrian point of gathering, and so that will be a specimen tree, probably an oak tree, or a olive tree, rather, not an oak tree, but they grow too slowly, but an olive tree, or some sort of specimen tree along with a raised seating planter there, and just a, a place for people to, to gather is, is the intent of that there, to clarify what she was asking about it. Other than that, if you have, have specific questions, I'd be delighted to answer them. And then the, the other thing I just want to mention is that we do have some new faces on the commission. I, I started on this project a little over six years ago now, and six years, three months, and seventeen days, but not counting. But, but, but in any event, you know, we have, we have spent a lot of time with, with staff working on a, a master plan and, and thinking through, in particular, the retail. It, it's very hard to develop retail without the tenants in tow, and at the same time, we spent a bunch of time with, with engineering and planning and focused on the master plan and circulation and those types of things. So I'd like to extend an offer to, to any of those commissioners to sit down and really share with you what sits behind the, the master plan. You know, we're required to bring each planning area to the council, either for a CUP in the event if there's a drive-through or something like that, but, or even the planning area needs to come forward as a development plan. And we're, unfortunately, we're not able to, to present the entire plan at once, but I, but I really would like to sit down with, with each of you and, and spend a few hours, as much time as it takes, to share with you our vision. You know, retail moves very slowly, and it's not done on a speculative basis, so I, I would like to extend that offer.
Thank you. Thank you.
Questions for the?
Me? Questions for the applicant? No? Oh.
Thank you.
Not yet. Yeah, thank you. And is there any public comments from the audience tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. And with that, I'll close public hearing on this agenda item and open up commission discussion. I'll start with Commissioner Hovey.
I appreciate the new revised one, because the one that I was looking at in the staff report, I was going to have the exact same comments that we had last month, but I do like this. I still have, I like this, but I still have the same issue with wanting to see the flow on the map for like the next project. It looks like maybe a Chick-fil-A next door or something, because it's kind of hard to see if this is going to be the right solution if you don't know what's going to be on either side. And although the map was emailed to me, even blowing it up, you still can't see what is there. I do, but I do like this, and I'm new, so, you know, I would defer to the comments of the other commissioners. But it would be nice in the future, if I'm here after the election, if you can see what the other sections look like in the parking lot, to see if it flows.
Sure. Or did you want, I mean, I can open up public hearing again?
That was all I had.
Commissioner Lee?
Sure. Again, so thank you so much for the revised drawings. It's definitely, it took a while, but I, it's definitely something that I was kind of envisioning from last meeting. So definitely, I appreciate the staff working on this fast, as well as the applicant, meeting with the staff and working this through last minute, basically. But definitely, the site plan itself looks a lot better. I do share comment that Commissioner Hovey also made, in that we're seeing, I know it's not fault of the developer, but it, it would, it would be nice to kind of zoom out a little bit, and then kind of consider whenever these projects come in as, as a project within the whole specific plan. So rather than just looking at one particular parcel, you know, how it flows through the whole development, I think that would be, actually be a good idea in the future. And so, you know, not knowing that certain elements of the development won't occur until later on, and we don't know what kind of tenants are going to come in, but at least looking at it in a, on a macro level, I think that'll, that'll help us make a better decision on, on things. So, you know, I, I share that comment, so. But I certainly, certainly really do appreciate everybody kind of last-minute moving forward and, and changing it.
Commissioner Charleston?
Well, I would pretty much echo what the, the first two commissioners had statements of. My question would be to the planning department. So when we go attack something like this, and we say we're going to give up a couple parking places, it, it's pretty easy to do that when we're in this phase, when we don't have a lot of other buildings being done, we don't really see what the parking needs are going to be, there's a lot of parking space in this whole area. And the last time we talked, we said, if we had to give up parking here, we would be able to possibly connect it to the next lot over, or the next lot over after that, and we could combine that parking, and then we would have more than enough. So my question would be, is how hard is it to put some kind of precedence here, saying that if we're going to reduce parking here, we need to make sure we've got an overflow of parking in the next one or the one after that, to make up for this in the long, long term? I, I don't mind giving up two parking places, it's not that big a deal on one phase, but this goes back to what Commissioner Lee said. If you look at the whole scope of everything we're going to do, which is still quite a bit, you know, we have not been short parking almost anywhere. And a comment that I heard from somebody that was up at the Target Mall, or the Target Eastvale Parking, they said, it feels like we're already on holidays, there's no parking at certain times. So that's a real big issue for people, and I've heard other complaints that people can't wait till our restaurants are built, because they're tired of going to Chino Hills where you can't park unless you go through the parking lot for fifteen, twenty minutes, waiting for someone else to leave. I don't want that to be an outcome of ours. So I think that the, the recommended view is, is much better, it's much better for drivers, it's a nice in-and-out, but overall, I think we really need to keep parking in mind, and that's really my main concern. Thank you.
Vice Chair Oblea?
I agree with my colleagues, and I agree that this is a big improvement from the original. Other than that, I have no questions.
Well, I'll keep it short and sweet. I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. We had to share same concerns at the last meeting, me personally, with the Target Plaza-Louis area. I'm dodging traffic all the time trying to get to one area from another, so I think flow is important to, to everybody, and include, including the shoppers. That, that'll benefit the retailers in, in a lot of ways, so. Well, with that, I have nothing further. Should we do two motions, or, or just one motion to approve both? Just one?
One.
One's good. Okay. Entertaining motion to approve project number PLN 18-20042.
Can I make one more statement before we put a motion forward?
Sure.
So, it's really a question, and so are we able to tie any future parking to this one, to make sure we aren't short parking at all?
Doing a parking reduction like we're doing here doesn't require that. It's something that you can just do, and normally, this would have been done at a staff level, but since the project is moving forward, we brought both pieces to you. We'll certainly keep an eye on overall parking, but if you figure that the whole, that retail parks about five per thousand, so two parking spaces is about 400 square feet of retail, and I'm sure there's going to be some flex in the total, far more flex than that in the total amount of retail in the center, which is currently overparked, as I recall. So there's already more parking than we would require per code, so they're already overparked on a center-wide basis. We're just focusing on this one pad here and, and its particular needs, but, you know, as you note, there's an ocean of parking out there. If this were to fill up, and somebody really wanted to get to something that was in here, they could easily park right across the internal roadway.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm on, on the same page with, with everyone. The, the thing is, if you go to the Target parking place, it's not that simple to go from one parking place to another. We don't have really dedicated walkways. I know that was done pre-us, and I think we've improved a lot of that, but if you're walking, I mean, this is a destination that you're going to drive to. You're not walking a half a block and going to be eating at this restaurant. So I, I just want to make sure in the future, this whole area, you know, if you live right across the street, it might not be too bad, but for the most part, anybody coming here is going to be driving to it, you know, for the time being.
Yeah, and maybe Mr. Mace can talk more about that. I don't know if they plan to tenant this with restaurants, and that, as he knows, is what tends to cause problems. Like in this center here, the parking problem, the biggest one that I know of, because I deal with it all the time, is over by the food court. Because you got the food court, and you've got Blaze Pizza, and Luna Grill, all those food uses generate a lot of parking demand all at the same time. So I don't know if he's planning on, if this were to tenant all with restaurants, yeah, you might have a problem, but if it's typical retail, we don't see that same kind of, you know, concentrated parking demand.
I, I think one of the challenges, I mean, even this shopping center, this shopping center is never fully occupied. I mean, we, we're here all day long and, and till eight, nine o'clock many nights, and this parking lot is pretty open. The challenge is, is when, when everybody wants to circle around to be right up in front, but if we can design our parking lots, much like we've started to do a better job of in Eastvale, of providing pedestrian pathways in them, so that if you're parking one block away, which is 400 feet away, it doesn't feel like a mile, right? And so crossing that Target parking lot up here feels like a mile, no matter if you're, even if you're just crossing the drive aisle, because it's so big, and there's not a lot of pedestrian connectivity. And so I think that the thing is, is once people park, how do we get them to the store and allowing them to park? But you, you'll be surprised, a Costco employee will, will leave Costco and walk over here to a business or something, and, and we don't expect them to get in their car and walk over there to get there, so we also need to provide that pedestrian connectivity and that opportunity. And then there's two, two, across the street from this project, Ontario is developing with 145,000 people, and so we, we want to make sure that they feel welcome to shop and spend their tax dollars in the city of Eastville. So, you know, those are other components there, too, so I think there's a, a lot of good things going on here.
Agreed.
So, and, and there's plenty of parking, I, I mean, when you look at this project from an aerial perspective, there's more asphalt than there is buildings, and so I think there's opportunities to even intensify this center someday in the future, just like this current one we're sitting in.
Perfect. Applicant, you need to open up.
Open up. Public input have? Public indeboard have auditioned and... Did you have questions for a word?
No.
Do you want to additional comment? Okay, I'll make it quick.
So that you do know that we have a reciprocal covenant and easement agreement that affects all the retail. And there's the city municipal ordinance that says you need to have five and a half stalls per thousand square feet of parking. That REA, reciprocal easement grant we have with Costco, requires much higher parking levels for restaurants. So restaurants are parked at 10 per thousand. So if we're going to put food users in, you're going to see more parking. So I think your concerns are heard, understood, and we and Costco, the other tenants in there have the same concerns, so we're all on the same page, is all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll close public comment and open up for motion to approve project number PLN 18-20042.
I'll make a motion to approve the major developer. Do I have to make a motion to approve this new site plan? Or is it assumed that we're approving?
You can make a motion just to approve the resolution that has been presented by, and go ahead and do clarify it's the new plan presented to your commission today.
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation with the caveat that the new site plan is the one that we're approving.
Check it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Abela?
Aye.
Chair Fang?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Onto item 6.2 for project number PLN 18-20051 for tentative parcel map number 37629. Is there a presentation?
Yes, there is, Mr. Chair. And before we launch into that, I think we've had some folks come in since the meeting started. So just for those of you who are here to talk about the merge project as a whole, about the development project, that's not on tonight's agenda, so you're certainly welcome to speak to the commission. The hearing on that project will be scheduled later, and you'll get a separate public notice for that. So with that, I will turn it over to someone who is new to the Eastvale Planning Commission, Russell Toler, who's behind me. Russell has been with us for a couple months now, providing plan check services and processing projects like this, and he will give his presentation on the parcel map. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. So the resolution before you is strictly to approve the tentative parcel map to divide this property, 26.3 acre lot into two for conveyance purposes. There is the proposed tentative parcel map. The division is from one single parcel to two parcels, one about 15 acres, one about 10 acres. As Mr. Norris says, the merge project will be reviewed at a later date. This is just to give an idea of where it is in the city, the northeast corner of Limonite and Archibald. Conformance with current zoning code, new parcels in the A2 zone are required to be a minimum of 10 acres. They both meet that. The recommendation tonight, again, is for the approval of tentative parcel map 37629, subject to standard conditions of approval. And staff is here to answer any questions.
It's Russell, right?
Yep.
Okay. I'm kind of good with names, but I'll try to remember that. And I'll open the public hearing now. Is there any speakers for this item? Ms. Cooper?
Yes, our first speaker is Raymond Pulverini.
Sherpers and Fang, members of the planning commission, thank you very much for considering our request for this tentative parcel map. I'd also like to thank Eric Norris and Kanika and Russell and Joe and Craig Bradshaw and Melinda Lim. A lot of people get their hands on something like this and are involved with it, and I want to acknowledge their efforts on this, as well as on the rest of the merge project, which you'll see coming up at a, hopefully, the next planning commission hearing in November. I am available to answer any questions, although Russell did a fine job of describing what this is for and what it does. So if you do have any questions, please feel free.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sharon Pond.
Thank you. Good evening. I understand that you are not going to address the merge this evening, and I know that's in planning stages. So I'm here, and I had emailed the commissioners as well with my concerns. In your planning, if you can be sure to address some of the concerns that we have as Ontario residents, again, the noise pollution, light pollution, possible sound wall, considering dense landscaping on that wash area. A lot of us use that wash for a walkway. We take our walks there. So one of the other things is, in your planning, to think about things that are aesthetically pleasing. We look out our window to that field nightly, daily, and so that is one of our concerns as well, is as the residents, we know that perhaps there will be a wall, and just to have that consideration for us as residents as well, that we would like to look out our window and be able to see not just a brick wall, not just the brick buildings, but something that looks nice. So again, just to keep those things in mind, and we'll be back in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And is the applicant here to speak, or was the first speaker the applicant? Okay, let's slip that in there with the speaker card, huh?
Mr. Sherpers, may I add just a couple comments to my earlier?
I'm sure, did he use it? Can you fill out another card for?
Yeah, you would need to fill out another speaker card, but you can...
He can just come up and...
Yes, three more minutes.
Three more minutes, yeah. Okay, come on in.
All right, so just...
First, I had a question. I sent an email just based on this notice to Mr. Toler. Hi, and I actually met him the day before, so I had no idea. I had forgotten your name, so I didn't know I was emailing the same person, but I was just a little bit confused because his email address is part of the Michael Baker International domain, and now it's my understanding that he works here at the planning office. So I was a little bit confused about who I was speaking to, so hi again. And that's, that was my question, whether, did you just come over because you had prior experience with this project, or why do you have that email address?
So I can address that. We have contract employees that work for the city of Eastvale to process our plans, and so we have a contract with Michael Baker International to serve as our planning department. And so he works for Michael Baker, and he has a contract with us to do the processing of projects.
Thank you. And then my second comment is just, previous speakers have made the point that whether you live in Eastvale or Ontario or anywhere else, we tend to use the restaurants and stores and facilities of all the surrounding cities, especially the ones that are more appealing than others. Some people are driving all the way to Chino Hills to go to restaurants because it's more appealing. So we're all very much connected in this part of the Inland Empire to each other. I do hope that, being such close neighbors, that you keep in mind just how close we are to the people of Eastvale. My sister actually lives in Eastvale, so just wanted to put more of a face onto our plate. Thanks.
Thank you. And with that, I'll close public hearing and open commission discussions. Any question, Commissioner Hovey?
You received another speaker card.
For this?
For this item, yes.
I'll reopen public hearing.
Jennifer Cordura?
Yes. Okay. I'm Jennifer Cordura. I'm also an Ontario resident, but I consider myself part of the Eastvale community because this is where I worship, this is where I shop, this is where I teach. Everything I do is in Eastvale. My backyard is, it faces south into Eastvale, and so the merge project will be my backyard. I know that we're not discussing any of the planning, but I think it's important to voice my concerns about light, sound, and I'm not really quite sure what light industrial means and what that looks like. And if that could be discussed now or in November, clarification would be great. I think that's it. I just, again, wanted to put a face with the community that is behind you. We're not just behind you, we're part of your community, too. Thanks.
Thank you. But it doesn't hurt to give a brief explanation about light industrial.
Yeah, in general, light industrial, the way I like to describe it is, it's a building where things are happening on the inside, and you can't tell what's happening on the inside of it. There's no indication on the outside, there's no, there's no plumes coming off of it, there's no activity happening outside. And based on the size of these buildings, you're not going to see, for instance, like a distribution center. It's not going to be an Amazon-type project. The buildings are too small, and we'll be happy to sit down with you if you want and go through it, but there's not the huge rows of dock doors that you would see on something like that. So it's that kind of quiet industry, if you will. So light industry, heavy industry is different in that things are happening outside. You might see something going on. Light industry, it's all inside the building.
Thank you. Closing public hearing for this, and I'm sorry I interrupted you, Commissioner Lee, did you have questions about this?
I do not have any questions, however. I want to let you know that I did drive up there today, I did drive through your neighborhood, I did drive down your street. I saw your back wall, I saw the trail, I saw your neighborhood. I do think of you as neighbors, and my dad backs up to the Albertsons here, so I am very familiar with the noise and the light and all of that. So I wanted to see it, to see exactly what it was. I knew that that particular part of it wasn't on the agenda today, but I'd like to see what it is that we are discussing. So just want to let you know that I did drive through there, and I hear what you're saying.
Commissioner Lee?
Just a technical question. On the parcel map, is there a particular reason as to why it's not a straight line? Applicant or staff?
Yeah, do you want to go back to that on the slideshow, Kanika? Or Russell, I'm sorry? Yeah, when this project comes back in the future, you're going to see a further subdivision that takes these parcels in and divides them up. So what you're seeing here generally is a split between the light industrial part on the north and the retail part on the south. So each of those will be further subdivided, but that's basically the dividing line between the two. Is that right, Ray?
So it's my understanding that they do have plans, and there's a reason why those lines are not straight?
The lines, yeah. If you overlay their site plan on these lines, it matches up, the internal roadways and where the buildings are match up with this. And then the additional parcel lines are going to, for instance, split the parking lots and the retail into different parcels, and the same thing up in the light industrial.
Yeah, I guess that's the only concern that I had, was basically when you're subdividing a parcel, that means that's going to end up as a center line, basically, for a road. So we're looking at, although we're not looking at the full picture, but it's looking like it's not a straight line in terms of straight road, we're talking about a little...
There basically is a curved road coming in off of Archibald and then going through the project, and then it's actually intersecting there, where it makes that kind of southward turn with an access road that's going to come up from Limonite. So you are seeing pieces of the future road system in there.
Commissioner Charleston?
No questions.
Vice Chair Abela?
I had the same question as Commissioner Lee, but it's unanswered, so no questions.
No questions for me, but just a comment to the Ontario residents. Planning with our staff, with any staff in any city, we do consider regional impacts as well, so it's not something that we leave out just because it's not Eastvale residents. So what we do, keep everything in mind. So just if you have any questions in the future, you know, keep an eye on this item, reach out to us, reach out to staff. You can even reach out to your council or your commissioners as well, and maybe they can communicate with us, you know, not just on this, maybe on future matters, you know, it's collaboration that makes things work. So thank you for your comments. And with that, is there a motion to approve project number PLN 18-20051?
I'll move, we approve the tentative parcel map number 37629.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Charleston? Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Abela?
Aye.
Chair Fang?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, agenda item 6.3 for project number PLN 18-20040 for Sunshine Growers Nursery. Presentation.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is an application by Sunshine Growers to really clean up and bring in new, clean up an existing kind of blighted part of our industrial area and bring in a new business. And the applicant is here tonight, and he might want to talk a little bit more about this, but I would just note, and apologies to the folks from Ontario, but there's an Ontario business moving out of Ontario and bringing their entire business and their employees and several million dollars' worth of sales per year to Eastvale. So we welcome them here and looking forward to seeing that blighted parcel being replaced with something green and actually more ways than one. And I apologize, I forget, Myra is, have you made a presentation to the commission before?
Yes.
She has, okay. Well, so it's not the first time we've seen Myra, but Myra is the project planner on that, and I will turn it over to her to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Good evening, Mr. Chairs and the commission. The project before you this evening is for a major development review for the installation of 20,000 square foot greenhouse, water detention basin and associated parking on approximately 1.56 acres. Sunshine Groves Nursery is located at the northeast corner of Hamner Avenue and Riverside Drive and south of the 60 freeway. The project site is identified within the red star. The green, the blue area is the proposed greenhouse area. The gray area is for the pavement area, and the green is for the proposed plant display area. The white portion next to the...
What is the green area again?
The green area is where the plant display.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
And the white area next to the greenhouse is for the detention basin. The project, sorry, the site consists of several easements, and the project was assigned to not add any structures on those easements. The project will be accessed from Riverside Drive via proposed paved driveway. The project has been conditioned to comply with the fire department standards for access and truck turnaround. The following conditions are to be added. Connect the east end of both parking areas. Move traction closure west onto the pavement area next to the parking stalls. And to provide a plant and fence plant prior to the issuance of building permit. On this slide, we have the elevations. The proposed greenhouse is made entirely of clear material with galvanized metal. The design is susceptible due to its purpose of a greenhouse. On the next slide, you will see that it will only be visible from the Highway 60 and I-15 ramp. This project is exempt from CECL as an infill development project. Forty-seven notices were sent to the property owners and tenants within 600-foot radius, and no public comments were received. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve major development review subject to conditions of approval. to conditions of approval. The commission does not wish to approve the project, here are other options for the commission. Let's go through this staff, staff representation, staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can only see the top of her head from here. But your Commissioner Lee can't even see her.
I'm so short.
We'll get some booster chairs in here for the next meeting.
Now, her chair, it seems to be lower than the others, so I don't want to blame her height, so you can see the top of the chair. And I'll open up public hearing, uh, at this point, is there any speakers for this item?
No, we have not received any cards.
And would the applicant like to speak?
Um, I would be planning on speaking, but I'd be more than happy to speak or answer any questions, but I've been in business for forty years.
Sir, can you use the mic, please?
Yes. Is it already on? It's already on. Been in business for forty years, this would be my tenth nursery. A lot of times in the nursery business, what happens is you go into these areas that aren't developed, you have a nursery, and then later, when the land values get up, you move out. Well, that's what's happened in Ontario. So we sold our facility there, it's publicly recorded for fourteen and a half million dollars. And we bought the property down the street for a million one. And it was kind of a no-brainer, why leave the area when we can buy land for one-tenth the price? And we can put a new, more modern nursery than we have in now, it would be approximately half the size, but, and we can move that business over there. We're doing about four and a half million dollars now, and most of it is tax-based. There is a little bit of it that's straight wholesale, but most of our wholesalers do pay sales tax. So, we're anticipating at least three million dollars at that location, maybe more, we might be able to surpass the four million dollars with all the residents that are moving into the area. So the new millennials don't buy as much as the old baby boomers like me, but they do buy different things. They buy bark and rock and, you know, deco and stuff like that. So, and we have moved along with the times. Well, that project over there, I want to put a primo project in. I want everything perfect. Ever since I've been in business, I've never been satisfied with any location I've had. But that one, I want to be satisfied with. The place that we're in now doesn't even have asphalt parking, so we want to put asphalt parking in. We want to do everything right. When the consumer comes in, we want them to have even a better experience than they're having now. And they're pretty happy with our facility, we don't get complaints. I made sure our plant died and they're not happy with this, you can read all the reviews online, but really, we don't get complaints with cities. And we've been in seven or eight different cities. So, we try to solve whatever problems come up and we try to be a good part of the community. I lived in Eastvale for five or six years, and now my son lives in that house, and we love Eastvale, and we want to keep the sales business here. And one thing about it too, you're not really going to have too many nurseries go in, the land's too expensive. Unless they go in on some type of an Edison property, you know, you're just going to have a little small, half-acre place maybe go in, you're not going to have a nursery. And Edison land, they're not going to let you build anything. This property was very unique because there was some landlocked land that was never going to be built on, and there was a piece attached to the Edison property that we can put this facility on. So, and we're proposing to put Conley Greenhouses, they're in Pomona, they've been in business for fifty years. Every time I build something, I build it with Conley Materials. They're not cheap, but they build a good facility. This facility here would be more upgraded, it'd have automatic shading, it'd have better materials built into it, uh, better coverings on the roof that you don't have to keep replacing every three or four years. So it would be a very nice facility. And, um, that's about all I have to say. We do put out like a thirty-two-page color catalog with all our products, so we're not a little backyard Edison-type nursery. We're a regular nursery and we're trying to even be a better nursery. So if you have any questions.
Thank you. And, um, Commissioner Hovey?
I drove this property as well, and I think it's a great location. Um, my concern is only the reflection of these greenhouses from the freeway. The freeway, the view of the property and where the greenhouses would be could cau- I just want to know if somebody looked at that? The direct, okay, the, because the, the top of the greenhouses would be right where your vision is on the freeway. So, I just wanted to know if there was, um, some sort of consideration made there for the tops of the greenhouses, or if there was something else that could be used for the top of the greenhouses so that there wasn't a, um, an accident caused or some sort of, um, visual impairment made there. There wasn't anything coming from the other side, I drove that way as well, there wasn't another, any, anything that I could see on the outside, but that would be my only real concern. I don't have anything else, thank you.
Yeah, maybe the applicant can answer that. I think the illustration probably overstates the reflectivity of the roof, but do you want to respond to that?
I can only say that when I flew in before from into Ontario Airport, and I've always looked for my greenhouse, sometimes it'd be kind of hard to find, and I've never seen any kind of reflection on it. But that could be solved if that was a problem. We wouldn't be able to do our automatic shading, but we could spray whitewash on those roofs. So if that was a concern in the future, we could whitewash those roofs. And if there was any type of reflection, which I don't think that there would be, but I've never, I've never really thought of that until you just brought it up. So whitewash could be put on those roofs that would eliminate that, if there was, but I don't think there would be any reflection from it.
It was just that it was so, it's so close to the freeway and it's almost at the same level. So that was my concern, I just wanted to make sure that somebody was aware of it.
We also do plan on putting a barrier wall around the entire property, and we planned on doing it with a hedge that would get approximately twelve to fifteen feet. So I think that that would block a lot of that out, so. We, we, we want it for a couple of different reasons. We, we want it also to, um, keep people from coming in. So if we got a twelve-foot hedge all the way around the whole place, nobody's going to be coming over that fence at night. And also too, it might cut down a little bit on the wind, you know, you get the Santa Ana winds and stuff like that, so we wanted to put a hedge around it. And we also wanted to isolate ourselves from our neighbors so that they didn't have any problems with us. We've already talked to the person over there with the auto wreck and is planning to put an RV parking in, and, uh, we've talked to him and actually become friends with him, I think we're going to split a wall over there. And, uh, as soon as I start over there, I'm going to introduce myself to all my neighbors, I usually do do that, and usually they become customers of ours, so. Uh, but the reflection part, I haven't, I haven't thought about that, so it hasn't been something that's come up in the past on any of our greenhouses. We do have greenhouses in Yucipa, and they're right on Yucipa Boulevard, and those are glass. So I think the reflection on a glass greenhouse would be much brighter than a, a opaque type of, uh, fiberglass. I don't think reflection's going to be an issue, but to be totally honest with you, I can't answer that.
Okay.
Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Charleston?
Uh, I have one question for, uh, planning. So when I, when I read the analysis, I saw in there that, uh, I, I love the project, what they're going to do, what, what they're going to put in there, but I wasn't sure about the part where it said there's going to be two portable restrooms, uh, office in the retail area about two thousand square feet. What, what do we mean by portable restrooms?
Commissioner Charleston, that is a typo. The project was originally proposed to do portable restroom, but it has been revised since then to be a permanent restroom.
Okay.
And it's going to be inside a greenhouse.
Okay. Other than that, I'm very happy with the project, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just, uh, if I could interrupt, uh, just talking with our legal counsel, if the building becomes a hazard by virtue of it, you know, if it turns out it is causing problems on the road, uh, it sounds like the applicant is prepared to deal with that. If not, we could approach that as a hazardous condition through a code enforcement action, but it sounds like we would get voluntary compliance in any regards.
Absolutely. I don't want to have any problems with anything like that, the problems on the freeway reflects back on me, and I don't want to be liable, so I'm willing to do anything that I have to do to eliminate that.
Vice Chair Oblea?
I only have one question, is the easement for the access. I only have one question. It's the easement for the access coming in, that's all the way from Riverside Drive, because with the maps you show us here, we really don't get a fair idea of how far that is. So there's going to be improvements all the way from Riverside to that property with road access in there?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's, that other part of the part of the project where there's no development happening, where it's just plants and paving, we're dealing with that at a staff level, but yes, there will be a paved, um, asphalt roadway all the way down to Riverside Drive. There'll be frontage improvements down there with landscaping along the frontage, uh, so what you're seeing on here, that shaded, looped portion on the left-hand side there, that will extend all the way down to Riverside Drive, so.
Is that going to take up that whole, um, undeveloped area between the salvage yard and the, um?
No, it's, um, between the salvage yard, if you take that, the left-hand red line and extend that down, that's the eastern boundary of that kind of long portion, all the way over to the heavy black line. So the access road runs down the middle of it, and they'll be planting off plants on either side.
That road's twenty-four foot wide.
Okay.
Yeah, and that meets all of our, the fire department, public work standards, et cetera.
All right, very good. And, uh, there'll be curb and gutter improvements and everything like that to go in with that?
Joe, do you want to answer that?
Good evening, uh, funding commissioners, um, my understanding is that, that, that big, long piece, if you, if you look at the, the other exhibit, it shows, um, like this one? Yeah, okay, this one, Eric? Okay, this exhibit, if you can. Oh, that one? That, that, okay. Anyway, in, in my, in my, uh, package, we have that. Sorry. The long piece, the yellow piece, this is another piece of, uh, uh, another parcel that yet to be developed in the future. So, um, uh, the, the driveway that leads to Riverside Drive, they have to do some improvements. Um, uh, we don't have the details for the improvements of the driveway itself, but at Riverside Drive, whatever improvement is needed to be done has to be completed at this point. But my understanding is that the frontage improvements on Riverside Drive would be, uh, completed at a later date when they improve that parcel. There is a plan for that, Eric, I understand this was part of the original plan, but they, they changed their, their directions in that at last minute.
Yeah, and actually, tho- those improvements to Riverside Drive, the frontage will be going in at the same time that this is all done, because it's really all part of the same development.
All right, very good, thank you, that's all.
Um, well, I just have a comment, I share Commissioner Hovey's concern, but as you mentioned, it fits opaque and everything else, um, it shouldn't reflect as much light, but it's just something that, um, commissioners here as well as staff is sort of charged with to, to look for public safety and, um, just for the community in general, so, um, I am glad to hear if there is any issues, we can go through code enforcement and work with you on that matter in the future, so, um, well, thank you, and I look forward to this. I'm not quite a millennial, I just missed it, so I'm a little bit older, but I grow a lot of stuff in my backyard, so I love nurseries.
And with that, um, is there a motion to approve, uh, project number PLN 18-20040?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There a second?
I'll say it. I'll say it.
Local?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Feng?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Right, ladies.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, before we leave that item, uh, could the maker of the motion confirm that that includes the three additional conditions mentioned in tonight's presentation?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll add those.
Okay, and, uh, item number seven, commission business, we have no commission business tonight, okay? Um, and we'll be on to staff report.
Um, no report tonight, sir, but, uh, a couple of questions for the commissioners. In November, uh, due to the Thanksgiving holiday, we're planning to have the commission meeting on Tuesday, the twentieth, so that's the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. And, uh, just wanted to poll the commission and make sure that we were going to have a quorum here.
November?
November twentieth, it's a Tuesday. So we hope that people weren't going to start their Thanksgiving travels until Wednesday or Thursday that week. We do have a rather full agenda, so we're hoping that you can be there.
Yeah, depending how the election goes, I'll, I'll be here.
Oh, you'll still be here, that, you'll, you'll be here till, uh, till December.
Oh, I get till December?
Well, actually, the, we see the new council in, uh, January.
Okay, I'm just planning worst case scenario here.
We see the council on December fourth, I'm sorry.
I am scheduled to be out of town.
On the twentieth?
I'm scheduled to be out that whole week.
Okay.
So you would have missed Wednesday too, then, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, the twenty-first would have been our normal date, but, um, we tried to avoid the Thanksgiving holidays, so can, everybody, we'll have four there?
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the other question for you also for that meeting, um, I was speaking with Chairman Feng earlier today and, uh, kind of looking forward to the, the Merge project, which has, one of the issues there is its proximity to the airport. We'd be happy to reach out to the Airport Land Use Commission. They came to our staff meeting a few weeks ago and gave a very interesting presentation on what they do and how they do their analyses of occupancy and conformance with the airport master plan. So if you'd like, uh, we can ask them if they'd be willing to come here that evening. I think that'd be a great opportunity for them to give you that presentation so that when we then go into the Merge, you'll know what we're, you know, how that was done, because their, their recommendation is part of that package.
It's a great idea.
So, okay, we'll be happy to reach out to them then.
Would that be, um, on the date of the meeting, when their, when the merge is on?
I would say let's do that in the beginning, under presentations, uh, and we can have them keep it down to maybe fifteen minutes or so. But it's, it's very informative, and I think it'll, it'll give you a better understanding of what they're doing and why, and then how they come up with their numbers.
Okay, yeah. For me, I mean, as we spoke over the phone, I think it's, if, I guess early on would be good. My, I mean, just my idea is if we can get an idea of sort of what is acceptable as far as what the retail is, uh, what is allowed, it sort of gives us a better idea of, you know, how we're going to work with the applicant, and, I mean, we don't want to be too harsh or too-
But we'll reach out to them and we'll give them a, a heads up that those are the kind of issues that you'd like to see, and maybe he can, I'm sure, adjust his presentation to highlight those particular points.
Thank you.
Uh, and that's all I had, sir.
And, uh, commission, communications, we'll start with Commissioner Hovey.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Commissioner Lee?
Oh, I just want to thank, uh, staff for, um, putting extra effort into, uh, not only the, um, Goodman project this week, um, but also, I also got an update on some of the pedestrian issues that we were having in Eastvale marketplace. So I appreciate, uh, staff working on those two items.
Commissioner Charleston?
Uh, I have one quick question for, it's the, the Walgreens parking lot, there's a couple of, uh, containers there, they've had a trash dumpster there for quite a while, a big one, a forty-yarder, and they've had two other, like, pods that have been there, and normally they're pretty upfront, this, you know, the business tells us what they're going to do, they're going to remodel, they're going to do this, but they've been in the parking lot for almost two months, probably. And I just thought, that's kind of weird that we wouldn't know if they're doing a big remodel, and it, it's been there for a while. And it, it's been there for a while.
I'm sorry, uh, we'll look into that first and report back, not aware that that was going on.
Other than that, nope, thank you for everything, that, I, I do echo what, uh, Commissioner Lee said. You know, are, a lot of our, uh, developers, they, they like what they like. And when we have to push back, you know, you guys have done a good job making them do what we really, I think is the right thing. We're only going to be able to build it once and we want to build it the right way, so. I appreciate you guys' effort.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Uh, yeah, it's just a couple of comments. The ninety-nine cent store looks like it's doing really well. They look like they're busy all the time. The exits from the ninety-nine cent store, I know we've, uh, told, uh, we, they have to have a right turn only coming off the, uh, coming out of the, um, Hamner exit. I know they have arrows painted on the ground, but are we going to require them to have signage to say right turn only? And the same with the, um, Schleisman exit? I know they can go both ways, but they're supposed to s- it's supposed to be exclusively a left turn onto Hamner. They're not supposed to cross the double white lines, is there any signage that we require them to put up?
I need to check on that, Commissioner Oblea.
So I know they have no signage for the, and the Hamner one is one, my main concern. Because I've, I walk there regularly, that's my, one of my paths of walking during exercise. And I notice they make left turns coming out of ninety-nine cent store into Hamner, which is a against what they're supposed to do, because it is a tapered exit, you know, force them to go right, but they make a left turn anyways.
The intent is to have a right-in, right-out only.
Right, right, exactly.
Where you're going to take a look at it and-
Okay, and see if-
Thank you.
They would have to require them to put some signage out there besides just the arrows on the ground. That's my only concern, now that, they seem to be do- doing a good job of keeping the trash off the ground. I've noticed that too, that, uh, during the grand opening, there was a lot of trash on the ground, but the next day I came by and it was all gone, so. Looks good to me.
There are a lot of people there.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Norris, um, just to get, like, you know, the ninety-nine cent store, it only receive a temporary C of O. We are still working with them on, um, better circulation for exiting the shopping center and the shared parking access with New Day Church.
Okay.
And we're trying to get that addressed prior to the final certification of occupancy.
Okay, very good, okay.
Yeah, we've actually, uh, sat down with the church and they had some concerns. There's a, a very wide paved area now between the ninety-nine cent store parking lot and the church parking lot, so we're looking at some options to re-stripe that, direct traffic better, so we've been talking with Public Works about that as well, so.
And, and another thing I was, uh, remembering that, um, there was supposed to be some access to the back portion of the church property uh, along the wall where the fire station's at, but I, I don't, I don't see that happening now because they curb that over and there's no driveway there, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm just wondering if we're going to come down the middle, that main e- entryway and just go straight back to the back there?
The easement for that access exists already, you'll see it physically in place when the parcel north of ninety-nine cent store develops.
Okay.
So part of that shared access easement is actually coming off of Schleisman, that's where that big wide driveway is. And then it goes up along the boundary between the two parcels, turns and heads back out and hits Hamner. So that'll all get paved and preserved as easement, as access for the church, to get them to that back half.
Very good, all right, thank you.
Um, I had a, um, question on just, I, I guess I need to refresh my memory, we had a, um, a gas station that came before us, um, it was like a few, maybe a couple of months ago, is for the, is it the, the, Pado. Sorry, Papa Dopp.
Palopolis?
Yeah. Was that a Chevron or a seven-eleven?
That's a Chevron on the Lewis Palopolis property.
Okay. I hear they're coming back.
Yeah, they'll still come back, you, you haven't approved that yet.
Okay, so then, that, that hasn't gone anywhere beyond what we decided that, that night, right?
Yeah, on that-
There was a C U, there was a CUP, right, for?
You haven't, yeah, you haven't considered that yet. That, that'll come back to you as a-
Which one did we, that's what I want to sort of clarify, wh- what, which one did we deny?
Um-
There was a gas station denial?
Can I answer this question, so, the, when the project was presented to you on the Palopolis site, that was part of the project? But prior going to planning commi- um, city council for approval, that portion of project got withdrawn, so that city council did not deny or approve that project, and we do have an application for that site for major development review to for the gas station and a CUP, for that gas station.
Okay, so then the CUP will come back to us?
Both the development review and a CUP.
Okay. I'd like to speak to staff about that later on offline, there may be some other things going on, as far as community goes. Thank you. Well, other than that, um, thank you staff, um, for, for everything, um, reaching out to us, answering our questions, um, to what's left of the audience, and, uh, the deputy back there, thank you for keeping us safe. And, uh, with that, um, well, actually before I adjourn, there's-
Question for Joe too.
Oh, question from Commissioner Charleston.
Hey Joe, on, uh, on that ninety-nine cent store property, so when they did all the parking lot and they did all the work they did on there, they piled a lot of material on the other two lots, the ones that they haven't developed yet. So at what point, you know, we don't know exactly when they're going to develop that, but they took trees, now I saw they had some dumpsters in there, they were cleaning some of the stuff up. And they did put like, uh, a fence there with, uh, screening on it, but it looks pretty rough. And if, if they're not going to develop that for another year or whenever they're, whatever they're going to do, is there anything we can do telling them that you don't have a grading permit, you're not allowed to move dirt around like that and leave it just stockpiled on another piece of property without going through us?
Yeah, they, they, they're using that as a storage area, what you're saying?
They, they just put, they, they just left dirt there, so that's what I'm saying.
It's very unsightly, okay?
Yeah, it's fairly unsightly, so if they, if they're not going to develop it in a reasonable amount of time, we need to figure out what we're going to do with that, because wait till the weeds start growing out, that, that'll be tough. And it's going to happen when it starts raining.
We, we're gonna, we're gonna address that with our code enforcement, uh, people, thank you.
Thanks.
Our next regular meeting will be held, we come from November twentieth at six PM, and, um, with that, I will adjourn the meeting at seven nineteen.